Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of February 2nd, 2022. Now, this is not right. February 23rd, 2022. Went back in time. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. We have the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Josephit Jordan, who's the pastor of Christ First Ministry, lead us in the invocation. Pastor Jordan has been very, very active in leading efforts to prevent gang violence, in all kinds of outreach to the low-income residents of our community and those who are underserved. We really appreciate his leadership. Following the invocation, Adita Kikarla will lead us in the pledge. Adita is the appointee of Councilmember Freeman to the Youth Commission. He's the alternate commissioner. He's a freshman at Stockdale High School, a member of the Speech and Debate Team, the Math Club, and also is on the Stockdale Tennis Team and a very active Boy Scout. So we just appreciate your service, Adita, and thank you for being on the Youth Commission and leading that group. Pastor Jordan, would you all please stand?
Gracious and eternal God, we come before you to offer a thanksgiving and praise, thanking you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us, Father God. We ask that you allow this meeting to go as honorable and peaceful as can be. We ask that all things be done in your name. We thank you for this day, realizing that this is a day that you've made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. Thank God, and we all say it. Amen. Thank you.
So we pledge our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Adita. Appreciate it. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed only during the presentations portions of meetings, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Welcome to all of you. We're glad that you're here to participate, and we look forward to a good meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements, 5A.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify the agenda item on which they wish to speak will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on public hearing, item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. Hearing item 9A is the third public hearing regarding redistricting wards' boundaries. That's going to be heard at 6:00 pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21628C. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Disruptive behavior includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any public speaker cards regarding agenda items.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received three public speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Lori Pisante.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Go. My name is Lori Pisante, and I direct Civic Engagement and Government Relations Programming for the Delores Huerta Foundation. And the topic I'd like to address in this general public comment is with regard to public comment itself. It is the case that many of the topics that come before this council are quite complex. And I definitely appreciate this council's recognition that one of them is going to be heard tonight, and the time has been extended, and I'm very grateful for that. I would like to encourage this council to consider further action to open up and welcome the community into this chamber by having no time limit for topics like redistricting and extending, in some cases, the public comment segment from two minutes to three minutes. I also wish to note that the grapevine is closed today, and, you know, lots of our fellow Bakersfield residents might have gotten trapped on the other side and not able to participate here. So I would strongly suggest that this council look seriously into having remote participation as it has become a part of post-pandemic life as a general proposition, and increasingly people are going to be quite dismayed that the city of Bakersfield, as big and influential as it is, can't run a Zoom. So in addition, I want to also compliment this council on having a Spanish interpreter tonight. I would like to encourage this council in the future to consider having permanent such accommodations, as it's very clear that we have a really beautiful community, and many of them are here tonight, and I'm really excited to see them all here. Let's make sure they're all welcome and able to understand everything. It would be very different if I were giving my comment in Spanish, right? We all have to be able to understand one another in order to make decisions together. So thank you for considering -- oh, one last item. As the Fair Maps Act is going to require seven days for maps to be heard, the other process item I wanted to bring up is the fact that you may want to consider having an additional hearing in order to truly find the right map for Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pisante. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
OC Crawford.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and everyone. I just want to clear up something that I said at the last time I was at a meeting here. I mentioned that we may be a little naive and complicit. A better word would have been compliant. I believe naivety is a good thing. We're born naive. Adam and Eve were created naive. The thing is, we should listen to our Heavenly Parent and our parents until we become mature where we can look out for ourselves. What I'm saying is, we really have to be careful of what someone's -- when someone speaks, they're just another person like me. We were all created equal before God, so it doesn't matter what rank you have, you are a person just like myself. Anyway, I left you all something that gives you information to go and find out about this Fauci COVID-19 dossier, and it's proof beyond a shadow of a doubt with all the shenanigans that's been going on with the FDA, the CDC, the whole shebang. Dr. Fauci is -- he's been involved in many things that it needs to come to the light. And on the 14th of this month, every -- the Attorney General for the United States and every Attorney General in every 50 -- in all 50 states received this dossier. And also, on the 17th of this month, our city, our Kern County District Attorney, received the dossier, and they must act on it as part of their job. So just so you'll be in the know, you have information of where to find out more about this, if you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next speaker, please.
Curtis Bingham.
Well, in the number one from three to two, I got you, Mayor. To the Honorable Mayor and our staff, I'd just like to say my name is Curtis Bingham Senior, servant of Lord and Savior God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the unbegotten Son of a holy and faithful God. Thank you for our God we trust. Lord, tell us to bless our ladies, and I would like to do that. Sometime with this pandemic going on, they think you guys have the answer. You look out on TV, they see where it came from. Lord, we'd just like to say, 2 Chronicles, Chapter 7, Verse 13 and 14, he said, "If I set up the heavens, and there be no rain; if I send a locust to destroy the fields; if I send a pestilent amongst my people; if my people, who are called by my name, will humble thyself and pray, and seek my face, and depart from their wicked ways, then I will heal from heaven, and forgive their sins, and heal their land." That's the answer. You don't have to try to answer it. 2 Chronicles, 7, 13 to 14, the Lord take claim from all of it. Death doesn't bother him because he give life, you know, when we all coming in. But that will help you when people think you should have the answer. Then I'd like to say, November 17th, they had an article in there about Oversight Committee making recommendation where the money should go, and in the papers, it said nothing about law enforcement. Not you, because I've seen you guys bless law enforcement every time I've been here. But anytime we get a chance to bless them, we gotta bless them. The problem out there is not have enough money. The criminals got all the money. That's why they stand in power. I've never been here, and it's been this worse before out there in the city of Bakersfield. Man come outside catching people out there trying to break in cars. Tell him to go back in the house. He's doing it, then they shoot him in the back. We gotta do everything we can for law enforcement, no favoritism. Law enforcement for all of us. I am very serious. The time may come where all this may have to be glass thin. It is getting bad. We're doing bad out here. We need the help of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. It ain't no plaything. It is very dangerous in this world, not law enforcement's problem. The people are making a choice, and this is why the Lord is the way he is. He gonna judge every man according to his works. Two minutes, that's tough, but love you, Mayor. Love you, staff. Thank you, guys, and you guys done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Madam Clerk, are there any other public speakers?
Mayor Go, no, there are no additional speakers on non-agenda public statements.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 9A through 9 -- I apologize. Consent calendar items 7A through 7N for your approval. We have provided a staff memorandum transmitting the minutes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I move that items 7A through 7N be approved.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearings item 9A.
So for hearing item 9A, which is our public hearing for redistricting, that is to start at 6:00 PM. So we'll just take a break until 6:00 o'clock, and we'll come back here and continue. So if you can get back here before 6:00, that would be helpful, so we can start right at 6:00. Thank you.
Mayor Go, I would like to announce that we have an interpreter available this evening for anyone, a member of the public that needs Spanish translation services. Should they need those services, the interpreter can be found in the back of the chambers.
So just as a reminder, the public hearing for this always has to start at 6:00 o'clock, and so we're just going to take a little break. Okay, we're reconvening our meeting. And now, our next item is public hearing. Speakers will be allowed 30 minutes. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 30 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 28 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 28 minutes, 29 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, and quickly end your statements. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Third public hearing regarding redistricting ward boundaries will be heard at 6:00 PM pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21628C.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Mayor and council, good evening. We have been targeting this date to have a public hearing on this topic and invite the community to participate. But to provide some framework and context, for council, Brana Carrier, Assistant to the City Manager, will provide a brief presentation, and we will outline for council some of the feedback we'll be looking for after the public hearing. But following her presentation, we can go to public hearing and then council deliberation.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Carrier.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I wanted to introduce our Spanish-language interpreter tonight, so she can give some instructions to anybody who may be in the audience. Thank you. Muy buenas noches a los miembros de la audiencia. Para esta reunión vamos a tener interpretación simultánea en español a través de toda la reunión de redistribución. Si ustedes necesitan interpretación, por favor de ir a la esquina de este lado, del lado derecho, y voy a tener equipo allí para ayudar, asistir. Muchas gracias. Great, good evening again. We are at our third public hearing for the city's ward redistricting process, and tonight we have quite a few maps to go over. We've had a lot of updates since the first draft map was introduced in January. So I'll go over a little bit of what the process has been like so far, and what are some of the expectations coming out of council after tonight. So things we will cover: redistricting basics, traditioning, redistricting principles, communities of interest. We'll get public testimony, going over our current data and draft maps, and then, of course, our public hearing schedule, which is coming up here next. So this has been the process so far. This is a table outlining the meeting dates that we have had throughout the city's process. Again, with our first public hearing taking place last summer, August 18th, 2021, that was here at City Council. We also had a staff-led workshop in December, and in between that time, we onboarded redistricting partners. You'll see their logo in a lot of our presentation materials here. They are providing us some technical assistance with our outreach, but redistricting partners is mainly onboard to help us with our demographic analysis. So after December, we introduced the first Draft Map A on January 19th of this year. That was the second public hearing here in City Council. Last week, actually, Tuesday, we had another staff-led virtual workshop where we had some great discussion and testimony come in from the public as well. So where we stand tonight is February 23rd is the third redistricting public hearing. We have two more hearings officially on the calendar scheduled so far. The next meeting after tonight would take place on Wednesday, March 16th, and at this point, we have two remaining hearings left to meet our April 17th deadline. So that March 16th date is very important. Before you can vote on any final map without any more edits on it, those maps need to be out seven days prior to that meeting. So truthfully, no edits can be made past March 9th, which means we want to get those edits in as soon as we can before that deadline, and that's truly within the next two weeks. So the first vote to read into, you know, the Munich Code, the ordinance of your preferred map, would take place March 16th. Then the second reading of that same ordinance would take place on April 6th, and that would keep us within our statutory deadline. So we'll get into a little bit of what redistricting is. It's the process of adjusting district lines every 10 years after the release of the U.S. Census, and well-known examples are Congress and Legislature. And a note again, this is called redistricting. You will hear the term district and ward used interchangeably. We mean the same thing. Some traditional redistricting principles. You're meant to do this to prevent a district or a ward from becoming a gerrymander. So there are a number of criteria that have been used nationally and upheld by courts, and that's bullet pointed right here. Your wards must be relatively equal in size, and that's for people, not just citizens. They must be contiguous, meaning the district should not hop or jump. They must maintain communities of interest, and that was one of those new guidelines coming out of the Fair Maps Act in 2019. They must follow city and census designated place boundaries, and keep wards compact, both in appearance and in function. And then maintaining communities of interest, of course, again, was something that was new this year. We have had a lot of great feedback, and in your packets, City Council members and the mayor, you will have a stack of public comments that we have received so far. So those public comments, that's about 50 pages there, many different emails, so I'll give you a little bit of a summary of what I've read through those so far, but just keeping in mind that really, the decision-making for making any edits here on out will have to come from City Council. So our demographer can read those publics -- or read those public comments and take in that feedback, but really, it's meant for City Council to get those ideas and then relay that through staff so that we can make edits to any maps in the future. So speaking a little bit about communities of interest that you'll read in your public comments that you have, communities of interest are the building blocks of districts. A community of interest includes ethnic and language minorities and other groups. They are meant to be subjective and open-ended, to be as inclusive as possible. Communities that are covered by the Voting Rights Act are Latinos, Asians, and African-Americans. While communities of interest may include race, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district boundaries. I like to include this list here just to give an idea of what types of communities of interest there could be. Things like historical communities, ethnic areas, religious facilities, languages spoken, if you have any designated neighborhoods, things of that nature. So what is not a community of interest? The Fair Maps Act explicitly prohibits these groups from being considered as communities of interest, those with political party affiliations, incumbents, or political candidates. It's also hard in redistricting to truly utilize groups of similarly-minded people who do not share a geographic location or who are dispersed citywide. So when determining communities of interest, this is really kind of meant more for the public, but you as council members, of course, members of the community as well. Three critical questions in defining your community. Does the community have a shared culture, characteristics, or bond? Is the community geographic in nature? Is the community able to be mapped? And then describe the community's relationship with the jurisdiction and how it is affected by the policy decisions made by the elected officials. So we have some ways that we have been trying to collect that community of interest data, and some of this information is also printed out here tonight and is available on the back table when you walk into the council chambers. We have these paper placemats. These were designed by our redistricting consultants as a way that people can draw physically to try and propose maps and communities of interest, and those are available to print off of our website as well. Also, printed out at the back of the room and available online are community of interest forms. So we have had these translated both for Spanish and Punjabi language. You can also submit them online through a SurveyMonkey form, and I've also received a lot of this type of feedback by email. Very easy to send it in by email, and we accept that just as well. Okay, so getting into some of the draft maps that we have, we essentially have six. They are ABC 1, 2, 3. Those are your maps that you have right now. And the draft maps, ABC, are those that were provided by our consultant, Redistricting Partners. So a quick overview of what those are. You have seen these maps before. So Draft Map A, that's provided to all of the jurisdictions that our consultant works with. It's essentially a minimum change map, and that map does have two Latino voting age population minority-majority districts. Draft Map B unifies the north part of town, and it follows major highways to determine other ward boundaries, and also has two minority-majority districts. Draft Map C, same thing, very similar to Draft Map B, but instead of using major highways to fall back on and create those boundaries, it uses river and canal lines. Okay, so since your last public hearing, we have received quite a few public submissions for maps. We do have two speakers tonight, map authors, who would like to give comments on their maps, so I won't speak very in-depth about those maps. I will focus on just a high-level overview of what our consultant was able to provide. So the first public submission was from the Equity Maps Coalition. This map unifies the north, the east, and western portions of the city. It creates three minority-majority districts. Public Submission 2, there's actually an updated version of Public Submission 2, so we are going with 2A, and this revises Ward 4 boundaries to follow the river, and it revises the southern Ward 2 boundary to stop at Brundage Lane. I do just want to note that for the submission, the updated submission for public, or for 2A, that it's currently outside of the 10% deviation, but the will, I anticipate that there will be revisions to make that come within the deviation amount. The third map was actually submitted this morning. Our consultant was able to turn around that demographic atlas pretty quickly, so wanted to include it in tonight's presentation. All of these maps are up on the city's website, and you also have all of the printouts of the atlases, that's what they're called when they go ward by ward, in your packets tonight as well. That third map was submitted by a representative from the Jakara Movement, and it also creates two minority-majority voting age population districts. So this first map that we have up here is, actually, that first map here is the existing line. So this is what the city of Bakersfield currently looks like right now, and a little bit of how our population has changed over the last 10 years. So the data that you see in front of you on this table is actually state redistricting data, so it's a little bit higher than your 2020 census data. This data includes the redistrib -- or redistributed, contains inmate population, who are not currently here in Kern County, but their last known address was here in the city of Bakersfield. So that total is 406,265, and that is a 16.1% increase over 10 years, which is double the rate of the state of California. So Bakersfield has been growing rapidly. I'm going to close out, at least staff part of the presentation, just going over some visuals of those maps that you have to consider. As of right now, these are not final. We are looking to City Council members for direction on any suggested edits, or even if you are curious to see, you know, what the demographics turn out to be for a certain map. Does not need to be an official vote. Any council member can request a map, and you can request any number of maps based off of what you are curious to see and that our consultant can provide for you. So looking at this first map right here, this is, let me see, Draft Map A. Again, so this is the minimal change map, and you can actually see between, there you go, the existing lines and proposed boundaries in that, in this iteration right here. Draft Map A, again, the minimal change map, only takes a small portion out of Ward 1, adds it to Ward 2, as Ward 2 currently has the lowest population among all of the wards, and it also clips off a top piece of Ward 3 and adds it into Ward 4. So Ward 3 would lose a So Ward 3 would lose a piece into Ward 4, and Ward 4 would gain that population. And again, just to reiterate as well, Ward 3 currently has the highest population. Okay, Draft Map B, this draft map is one provided by the consultant. This follows highway lines, and you'll see some significant changes between the district boundaries here, the ward boundaries. And you'll see that Ward 3 stops before going into the downtown area. Ward 4 subsisting all of what was previously Ward 3. Wards 5 and 6 have a changed orientation. Again, that is focused on highway lines. And then wards, you'll see again Ward 7 and 1, largely in the same area, but there are some boundary changes there as well. Okay? And then Draft Plan C, very similar to Draft Plan B. Ward 3 has slightly different boundaries when going adjacent to Ward 2, and same thing northwest side of town being one full ward, and the southwest side of town having a different Okay? So this first map here is Public Submission 1. This is the Equity Mapping Coalition's map. Looks, for the most part, Ward 3 also staying in various quadrants of the city. And again, we have Ms. Pesante here who can speak a little bit more on the thinking and the process for coming up with their map. Okay? So this is the map that we received updates on. This map is a little bit different than the other ones in that this one actually follows the river proper. So if you look at Ward 4, this was one of the revisions that was requested to follow Ward 4 along the river, and there is also a revision requested to end, again, that Ward 2 boundary at Brundage Lane. But this map in its current iteration is outside of our deviation, so I anticipate we will be getting more edits to bring that within an allowable deviation. And then finally, this is the map we received this morning. We're able to turn around and include in tonight's presentation. This was submitted by the Jakara Movement. I do believe that it is somewhat similar to the Equity Coalition's map as well, but again, we have our presenter here who can speak more on why they created the board boundaries that they have. Okay? So just one more time, taking a look at the remainder of the process that we have. It's a pretty tight timeline that we have to get some additional maps out, but these are draft, and they are meant to be draft for you to make those comments if you'd like to see more changes coming up. I don't have the capability to show you around the website right now, but the website is up to date. It has all of these maps, all of these atlases. It has a web map where you can actually zoom into the street level and see specifically where each boundary falls. It also has the compilation of all the public comments received so far, as of about 1:00 this afternoon. Okay, so when it comes to amending plans, this is just good to keep in mind when making your suggestions, because our consultant will be reviewing these comments and essentially take that as homework, to see if you guys want to see some updated maps. So amending the plans, there's trade-offs in balancing population between wards. It's often necessary to ensure plans stay within the legal total population threshold and meet other redistricting principles. So keeping in mind, we're keeping those overall wards underneath 10% in total deviation. You can identify a swap of population between two wards. So as you're looking at demographic information, if you have two wards adjacent to each other, and maybe you see a boundary that makes more sense based on your criteria, you may just be able to swap some of that population between a line. Also, when making your suggestions, it might not be something that's adjacent. Maybe you want to see multiple changes, and that works too. What our consultant will do is identify a set of changes, and they'll do this on something of a rotating basis, just making sure that the population stays within those parameters for each ward. Okay? And what's next? The council should identify a plan or plans to move forward with to the next meeting with specific changes, if any, that are clearly identified tonight. All draft plans will go to a final plan selection hearing. The final plan selection hearing will consider only draft plans that have been made public for seven days. So again, on our current timeline, that would be March 9th, and numbering of the wards is done at the end of the process. So just from staff, no formal vote needed tonight, but we do recommend a council member direction, and we will have additional time here for our public speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. And at this time, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, how many speaker requests have we received?
Marygo, I did want to mention that we received a staff memorandum that has been provided to the council, transmitting correspondence and submitted maps. We have received 15 public speaker cards regarding this item.
Okay, thanks. So while there's a two-minute time limit per speaker for a total of 30 minutes, we would like to give everyone here an opportunity to speak on this very important topic. So the way we'll do it is the groups that wish to present a draft map will have five minutes to speak, and then individual speakers will have two minutes to speak. And I believe that we've only received two requests from those who have submitted draft maps, and so I'll call on Public Submission Map 1 first, and then Public Submission Map 3, and each of you will have five minutes to present, and then we'll call on the others for individual presentations. So Madam Clerk, would you call on Public Submission Map 1, please?
Okay. My name is Lori Pesante. I'm the Director of Civic Engagement and Government Relations for the DeLota Suerta Foundation. And do you need a minute?
Yes. Thank you, go ahead.
Have all council members received the... Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Equitable Map Coalition Proposal A. We collected community of interest surveys over the last year to engage people in the redistricting process and to hear directly from them what they want to see in their representation in their map. And what you have in front of you, you clearly have received many, many, many materials in this process, and one of the things that I have found very helpful is to see it all on one page. And what you're looking at on the screen and in front of you is basically a side-by-side comparison of all of the maps that have been proposed so far in the city of Bakersfield. And to the extent that I have extra copies, I'm more than happy to share with the public, and I will be submitting to your redistricting website so that people can see it online as well. I have previously given a handout related to the Fair Maps Act criteria, and so at the top left-hand corner, you see the equal population or deviation. I mean, that's a hard line that can't go above 10%. So as an example of how to apply that criteria, you see Public Submission Number 2, and when I learned about 2A, I was able to identify that these are two maps, that maybe you like certain features of the map, but the map itself could not be adopted because it exceeds the deviation of 10%. And so it's a way for you to say, hey, I like these other features of this map. Maybe I'll note over here in the far right-hand column, you know, what is my ideal map, right? Because you're going to hear from me, and you're going to hear from lots of people. But ultimately, you are the one who is going to decide what criteria and what interpretation of that criteria to apply to this process, and you get to decide and put your order in, basically, right? It's like we're going through the drive-in and in-and-out, and we've got to order our burger. Do you want onions? Do you want cheese, right? And so on the far right-hand corner, to the extent that you see things that you like, hear things from the community that you really want to emphasize because it matters for your constituents, that is the ideal place to start jotting down those things. So when it comes to deviations, it's got to be less than 10%, and the lower the better, because the lower means that you have more equal population. Now, with regard to the Voting Rights Act districts, our position is that you have to draw three Latino Voting Rights Act districts, that you have by far sufficient population to draw those three Latino Voting Rights Act districts, but that in addition to doing that, it's really, really important to consider those other protected class groups, your African-American populations, your Asian-American populations. And our contention is that the higher the percentage in a Voting Rights Act district, the better, the better for that community. So for example, you can see that on the Equitable Map Coalition map, you've got Ward 1 is a VRA, Ward 2 is a VRA, Ward 7 is a VRA, and within Ward 1, which is a Latino VRA, you've got African-American population at 11.6% and an additional VRA with African-American population of 18.8%. That means that Ward 2 is really going to empower your African-American community, and you can use that as a criteria to compare all of the maps, because if they draw population numbers for African-Americans that are too low, it means that you're not empowering them the way that you should. Same thing with our Asian-American populations. They tend to be in Ward 5 and Ward 7. Ward 7 on the Equitable Map Coalition map is the Voting Rights Act district, so therefore Ward 7 with a population Asian-American of 11.9%. You're really seeing the way in which protected class members can vote together as a coalition and really be protected and make sure that their voices are heard on this council. So I really want to highlight that, you know, using a form like this can be very helpful because being myopic about focusing on one criteria over another will cause you to fail in doing what is ultimately your constitutional duty, to equitably distribute political power among your seven council wards. And to do that, it takes reviewing all of the criteria, and especially the ones that are non-negotiable, equal population, VRA districts, protected class members, and that contingency piece. I highlighted and read those features that should automatically eliminate these maps from your consideration, but it doesn't mean that you can't use them to create one that is ideal for you and your ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pesante. Madam Clerk, would you call the next public submission map, please?
Good evening. Oh, hi. Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Harveen Gurd, and I'm the current Canon Community Organizer for Jakara Movement. Jakara Movement is a grassroots organization that works on empowering and uplifting all of the communities, specifically the Punjabi Sikh community. And so every day, working closely with our community, I understand and continue to have a deeper understanding that we must work to inspire... Our organization is inspired to prioritize and recommit ourselves to the betterment of the larger community as well and the power within the collective. So it's a pleasure seeing so many of you all who, the familiar faces, Jakara, as I know, Jakara Movement has worked closely with many of you in the past and definitely in the future. I'm here today to advocate for the map submitted by our organization, Jakara Movement. The map is not only population-balanced, but it's also nice to look at. It's basic, easily digestible, and follows major roads and is easily recognized by the geography that is most commonly used, are the major roads as well. So we use the best practice by creating these maps by taking community input into consideration to ensure we accurately represent the Punjabi Sikh community while keeping compacted continuity and population balance in mind. Despite growing up on the east side of Bakersfield, I often spent time on the southwest side of town where most of our community resides. So our Punjabi community often falls within the districts 5 and 7. D5, with new housing developments, create a huge opportunity for growth and enrichment of the larger Bakersfield community. And if we look into D7, the map lines fall below District Boulevard, and the empty industrial center thus makes a good barrier and is in compliance with those regulations. The map accurately reflects and encompasses the Punjabi community to ensure that we are kept together. This map will also keep Westchester and Oleander together, as well as African-American, Latinx, and northeast Bakersfield together, specifically districts 1 and 2. Well, of course, the Jakara Movement map, we hope is enacted and is used as well. I want to thank the city of Bakersfield for encouraging the public to get involved. For this purpose, I strongly urge you to consider any of the publicly submitted maps. There are voices in the community, and to support... These are the voices in the community, and to support civic engagement, we must give the public's voice key precedent. Finally, we know there are no maps that are perfect. If there are minor revisions, a street here, auto park there, we're willing to work with groups and other community groups, community members, and of course, the council to find a solution that best suits us all. If there are any questions at all, please feel free to reach out to me or any of my colleagues. I can be contacted via email at harveen@jakara.org. Brianna also has other important contacts within Jakara Movement, so feel free to message us anytime. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you all will prioritize the needs of the communities by adopting maps that take our beloved community members in mind. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Madam Clerk, now we will go to our individual speakers, and each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first speaker?
Gurdinshan Singh Man. Raj Paul Singh.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Janjar, and I'm a health and wellness fellow with Jakara Movement. I came to represent Jakara Movement in two communities of interest, the Punjabi and Latinx community. I'm born and raised in Bakersfield, California, so, you know, I'm obviously part of the community and been a part of this community since birth, and I've seen this community grow throughout my life, especially within the minority communities that I'm a part of. And having the proposed map by the city council will stifle the growth of our communities for the next 10 years. Since this is only decided every 10 years, I really urge, you know, the proposed draft by the city council to maybe be reconsidered for some of the public draft maps, especially the one by Jakara Movement, because the proposed map fails to accommodate the growth that has gone on in both of these two wards of interest, which is Ward 5 and Ward 7. Bakersfield is only as strong as our weakest community members, and I hope that the council will strongly consider our map and the future of Bakersfield. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Manmi Gil, and I'm currently...
Can you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Hi, I'm Manmi Gil, and I'm a junior at Ridgefield High School, and I'm an Assessors' member, and I would like to say that I'm in support with the map submitted by Jakara Movement, and it's like, it seems the most equitable, not to just the community, but also to other communities. And as a resident, I realize the need for equal resources within all districts, and I believe that our voices can be heard, and especially because redistricting only happens every 10 years. We want to ensure our future and that all committees... We want to ensure our future and that all communities have equal resources. We hope that you will take our concern into consideration and help us accommodate these concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. And speakers, as you come up, just make sure that you're speaking right into the mic. That will help us a lot. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Jasmine Ghore, and I have been a resident in the city of Bakersfield for 10-plus years now. Since then, I have been working closely with the Punjabi Sikh community for a few years now. As a member of the public, the redistricting process is crucial for the accurate representation of so many communities, especially communities of color, and as such, also my community, the Punjabi Sikh community. In the redistricting process, one of the key factors is keeping communities of interest intact. A community of interest can be defined in many ways, but it is important to consult the community to get a better understanding of what they consider to be their community of interest. I would like to state that I am in support of the Public Submission 3 Jacara Movement map drafted by the Jacara Movement because it keeps the Punjabi Sikh communities of interest together. Our community falls within districts 5 and 7 in the map proposed by the Jacara Movement, in which this community is kept whole. On behalf of the Jacara Movement, or sorry, on behalf of the Punjabi Sikh community, we hope that you will take our concerns into consideration and help to accommodate these concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Navpreet Ghore, and I'm coming to you as a resident of Bakersfield. I'm currently a senior at Ridgeview High School, and I have been working closely with the Punjabi community as an SHSS member since freshman year. As a member of public, I believe that our proposed map from Jacara Movement would be the most suitable for our community. Through this map, we're trying to provide every district with equal resources so they can have more opportunities and more benefits. Moreover, in the past, many communities' voices have been suppressed due to them being categorized into one district, causing them to have less representation in our community. Redistricting only happens once every 10 years, so I would like you to consider Jacara Movement's map so Bakersfield could better invest into our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Next speaker, please.
Vahiguru Jhikakalsav, vahiguru jhiki fadde. Good evening, council members. My name is Indirpal Singh, and I am a senior at Ridgeview High School. I have been working closely with the Punjabi Sikh community as an SHSS officer and as a member for four years. Growing up, I have seen my community go underrepresented for far too long. California has one of the highest-concentrated Sikh-Punjabi populations. However, it wasn't until the 2020 census when that was even recognized. Now, we, along with countless minorities, are facing another issue with redistricting, and with the current maps, risk going underrepresented once again. As a high school senior, I would like my voice to be heard in the future, and I would like to have an impact on policy. Clustering all of the minorities in one district would unfortunately make that very difficult. As a member of the public, the redistricting process is crucial for the accurate representation of so many communities, especially communities of color. In the redistricting process, one of the key factors is keeping communities of interest intact. It is important to consult the community to get an understanding of what they consider to be their community of interest. And this is ours. I would like to say that I am in support of the proposed map submitted by the Jacara Movement because it keeps the Punjabi Sikh communities of interest together. Our community falls within districts 5 and 7. Finally, we high schoolers are the future of Bakersfield, and we truly hope you can invest in our disadvantaged communities. The decision we make in drawing lines will be not only impacting the lives of our parents, but impacting policy for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Heather Pennella, and I'm here first as a property owner in the Oleander neighborhood, and secondly, as a servant leader to both the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee and the Hub of Bakersfield. And I'm asking you to recognize the downtown area as a neighborhood, excuse me, as a community of interest, and to include the entire neighborhoods of Oleander, Westchester, Old Town, and Alta Vista in that group. These neighborhoods must stay together to preserve our city's history and vitality. From a personal note, and as a proud homeowner in the Oleander area, the proximity to downtown and our urban core was a major draw for me when I was looking to invest in my first home. I am fearful that if proposed redistricting changes are adopted and coupled with the actualized removal of access to the neighborhood via the 99 through the removal of both the northbound Stockdale on and off ramps, it would create a detrimental consequence to our precious neighborhood and cause Oleander to become a proverbial island in the city. Removing Oleander from downtown infrastructure and identity would be a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pennella. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Eliana Honeycutt, and I am here, I live in east Bakersfield. And I'm here to urge the council to adopt the Equitable Maps Coalition Proposal A, which is one of the only maps that is fully in compliance with both the Fair Maps Act and the Voting Rights Act. And I highly encourage you all to do the right thing. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Jason Spurber, and I have been a resident of the Westchester neighborhood north of 24th Street for almost 20 years now. And I've been raising two children in that neighborhood in the same house with my wife for almost 20 years. And like some other speakers, I am here to urge you to consider the historic neighborhoods surrounding the downtown core as a community of interest when looking at all of the map options in front of you. I know that for me, living in Westchester and living downtown, it represents a vibrant, multiracial, multi-class mix of people who, people who have had roots in the neighborhoods for generations, as well as people like me who moved here from elsewhere and, you know, found a community to become a part of. And these neighborhoods are culturally and historically and architecturally inextricably linked to the downtown core. And as a resident, I would strongly urge you to consider that as you look at your maps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spurber. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Welcome. Go ahead and raise--
Yeah. May I? Thank you. My name is Lonnie McConnell. I live in Ward 2. I am here tonight on, I guess, out of fear of really Public Submission 1, which would tear apart our community, which basically extends from Oleander through Westchester, focusing on kind of people who have an interest in the downtown area. The commonalities between this group, which appear to be called the community of interest at tonight's meeting, but, you know, it really does bind us together all the way through Westchester, people who walk downtown, bike downtown, eat downtown, walk downtown. And so I was alarmed when, just recently, I became aware that there was, you know, you guys were being presented with something which might result in some sort of line being drawn, which would remove part of Westchester from Oleander or vice versa. So I would hope that, I believe it's your draft plan A or B, would be most desirable to most of the people who I was speaking to in these neighborhoods prior to coming to tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Daisy Torres, and I am a Bakersfield resident for about 20-something years. I am proud to say that I have lived in the Oleander area for more than 13 years, and I'm here to ask that you guys consider Oleander to stay part of the greater downtown Bakersfield. Downtown Bakersfield shouldn't be split up. Oleander, Westchester, Alta Vista, and downtown should all be together to keep our downtown historic together. So thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good. My name is Helen Kautowski. I've lived with my husband for 20 years in Oleander Sunset. And when I heard that there's a possibility that we would be split off from Westchester and downtown, I was concerned about it because you think about all three of those together and their historical. People move to our area, and Oleander, they work downtown, and I feel like they should be all considered to be apart, and that if we're split off from those and put into a larger ward, you know, that has, really doesn't relate to us, that we would be neglected. And I agree with everything that other people have said. I've noticed in other cities, like in Orange and in Long Beach, they really feel that those older areas are important. They have plaques in the park and everything, and I'd like to see more attention given to those areas. And if they're all three together, I think, you know, that would help that to happen. And I guess if you have to call it a community of interest, I think it's considered the whole downtown historic area. So thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Kautowski. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Welcome.
Hi. Okay. Hi, my name's Jennifer Clayton. I'm a six-year resident and a homeowner in the historic Oleander Sunset neighborhood. I'm concerned about the proposals for redistricting, the city council wards that separate our neighborhood from the downtown Westchester and other historic neighborhoods. Oleander Sunset is the central Bakersfield neighborhood. We are unique, incredibly diverse economically and culturally. Our homes run the gamut of million-dollar homes to low-income rentals. We have two schools, multiple churches, and our own park. We sit on the cusp of downtown area, and what happens there directly affects our homes. Pulling us away from our current ward would make us a small part of a larger district where our new, unique concerns would not be mirrored by other areas. Oleander Sunset residents show up, we work together, and we vote. We need to remain a part of a reward, a ward that reflects our triumphs and struggles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Madam Clerk, are there any other public speakers?
Madam Go, that was our final public speaker.
Thank you. And so at this time, did we miss someone? Go ahead and bring your card up. Go ahead and give that to our city clerk. Can you interpret, please? Would you like interpretation, Spanish?
No. I think I can do it all.
Okay, very good. Please introduce yourself.
Gomishtan. Hi. It's the first time that I'm here, and that's why I'm not familiar with what I needed to do--
It's okay.
--in order to come and speak. But I'm here because I really want Ward 2 to stay the same, and the reason for that is because I had businesses in downtown California and also on N Street, different business throughout the 20 years. And just now, we purchased our own property on Chico Street. And I know there's a challenge, but I have a lot of hopes that together we can make this different. And all our historical homes are within the Ward 2 the way it is right now. And it's about putting more, as someone mentioned, in Orange County and also Pasadena. Even in San Fernando, they kept those community, those homes, those historical homes, and they refurnished them. And it's beautiful the way they've done it, and it's something we can do, but we need one person, we need those areas to stay together so we all can work, all the businesses and the homeowners, into making this happening here in Bakersfield, too. Okay? So that was my thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other requests? Come on up. And if there are any others, could you bring them up right now to the city clerk, please? This is the final speaker. I don't see any others approaching.
Carlos Bello.
Good evening--
Welcome.
Madam Mayor Go, council members and city staff, wanted to speak on the redlining, oh, sorry, red, redistricting, I'm sorry, proposals. Wanted to encourage you all to really take into account the historical nature of downtown, the character of the different neighborhoods, and how that is really important to the identity and the economy of Bakersfield. It's really, I think, a selling point for people looking to move to Bakersfield. And in general, I think it really helps, you know, the development of the business community, culture. It really helps Bakersfield thrive if we have a unified downtown as far as like Oleander, Westchester, downtown, Alta Vista. And I live, I live in Westchester and a property owner resident, so I think it's really important and it's to have a representation, an elected official who can really respond to the needs of downtown and really implement a vision that really helps the area thrive and attract people, residents, you know, investors, businesses, and so on, and people that want to really make downtown a thriving community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So seeing no other requests to speak, I'll close the public hearing at this time and return it to council for comment. Councilmember Gray.
Good evening, everybody, and we appreciate all of you that have come and participated tonight in our redistricting and just being here and participating in the system because it's so important that you're here, and that's what I'm going to talk about here in just a minute, to be able to share your concerns and what you're expecting for your city because this is your city. It's not our city. It's your city and ours. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak tonight. I want to bring to attention, last week, the Kern County Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to oppose two bills that are being fast-tracked through the state legislature that would strengthen vaccine mandates in California schools. Senate Bill 8676, which would allow children 12 years and older to get vaccinated without parental consent--
Councilmember Gray--
Yes.
Right now, we're doing comments related to redistricting--
Oh, I apologize. I know, but when I came, I quickly learned there were identified communities here. They've talked about the northwest and the southwest, and I had to go asking them, what do they mean by the northwest and the southwest? And I can tell you, there, and it holds today, there is a community mentality between, and that meant north of the river and south of the river is what it meant. I had to learn the code. But the southwest was a lot of new development. Northwest was maybe a little more established, people have been here longer, but they definitely wanted you to know, that's where I live. And I wouldn't live in the southwest. They would know we're building new stuff down, they really want you down here. But, and I quickly learned that downtown was important to everyone and was a community of interest. It was residents, Westchester, Oleander, and it was businesses who, for many years, have, you know, have been doing their best to revive downtown, putting their heart and soul into it. And there's more of a business association down there than there is anywhere else in town. But there's a real identity to different areas of our city. So, and in the northeast had this identity that everybody talked about. So, I think those things are important and they're, they sort of have deep cultural roots. I thought the maps were really interesting. And getting more specific, I think I will talk more about my ward because that's what I'm primarily focused on. So, from my ward, there were two maps. For a moment, not talking about where they met all the percentages, but that took Ward Five, and I think it was Ward, it was draft. Let me here. It was 2A, but there, oh, and I think the other one's called Public Map EMC, okay, the two. And they, they had maybe more changes than other wards, but on mine, they reunited a community of interest, both of those. That was really the only change they made. And they moved the northern boundary back to the river, which was historically the boundary, the community of interest. And certainly, when I was developing there, we treated this all as one big community. And they just followed the river instead of going down Ming Avenue, cutting neighborhoods right in half in the middle of Seven Oaks. It was really ridiculous. I never knew why they did it, but they, you know, nobody asked me. I was just, you know, running company in those days. But, so that one I like. Apparently, it doesn't have a lot of population in it, so on the draft, the 2A, the ward shrunk by about 8,000 people. I just didn't, I didn't realize it had shrunk by that much by moving it north and then clipping off something else. And I liked the Gosford, it looks like Gosford Road is, for the most part, the boundary all the way up to the river. And that is a cleaner line and has always felt, the new developments, I used to drive down and say, well, I can tell where we started. We started on the other side of Gosford. And their, just physically, you see, it looks different. So those are two changes that I liked. I'm not sure you have to square up the populations. The EMC map gave me about, almost no variations. I looked at almost any of them from, you know, they met all the criteria where on my ward and also on Ward Four, because I was, you know, taking a little away from Ward Four, but now the variances are very tight now. They, where I must have lost some more population somehow in the 2A. But I, whoever did these maps, as far as my ward, were thinking similarly, and I thought they, and they, you know, these are both nice maps, they met the criteria. And so, there's a lot, a lot of merit in both of those. One went a little north of the river, I guess. That's so my population didn't drop as much, so it was much more equal to what it is now. And, you know, that's okay. And these are fine points that people can work at as they go north. And I know we balance populations, but, and I don't know how Ward Four feels about that down to my right here, but I liked reuniting what was a community of interest and, for some reason, just got split right down the middle of neighborhoods. And I still get calls, what did the city do that for? And I have no answer because it's odd that Ming Avenue in the middle of Seven Oaks has people on both sides on different wards. It just never makes sense to me. So that really, for the moment anyway, reserve right to come back would conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, colleagues, one of the first things that popped out to me when I looked at all of these different maps is that we need to do more work on annexation throughout our city. Because frankly, there are too many county pockets that we need to include in the city as a whole. And I think part of the reason why some of our community members are concerned and some of these lines look a little funny is because of the fact that there are so many county pockets. And so I hope that that becomes more of a priority as we, as we move forward. But regarding tonight, I want to, want to first and foremost say that I appreciate everyone who's come out tonight and who really took the time to voice your opinions and your concerns. It really is helpful and it really is heartening to hear that there's people out there in the community who are actually paying attention to things that are happening at City Hall. And it's because of your involvement that we're all getting better and our city's getting better and that we have a brighter future. So I just want to thank all of you for participating tonight. I'm going to, like my colleague, Councilmember Freeman, speak from the perspective of Ward Two and the area that I represent. There have been a number of constituents in Westchester, Oleander, all that you speak as you will, who have commented. And one of the things I learned early on as a councilman was that you never mess with Oleander. And I think we heard that tonight. But I do think that the area around downtown and the neighborhoods around downtown are unique and different. They are, as I think it was Mr. Spurber who said, they're culturally, architecturally, and historically linked together. And I wouldn't, I would argue that that's true for Westchester, for Oleander, and for the Alta Vista and Loma Linda neighborhoods. And it's important for us, as much as we can, to keep all of those neighborhoods together. That's why, as I look at the various draft maps, I have to provide some feedback to some of the draft maps, to our consultants. When we look at Map B, we see that East Bakersfield is drawn out of that downtown district when, when actually, many institutions, including the Bakersfield City School District, education centers located right on Baker and Monterey Street, and refer to their center throughout the district as the downtown office. So they, in their minds, they're part of the downtown core. So I think that's important to recognize, and we have to include that now as a Monterey corridor and Alta Vista. And then also, as we look at Map C, Westchester is actually split up. So the lines actually run through 24th Street. So north of 24th Street is actually separated from south of 24th Street. And all of Westchester, in my opinion, should remain one, one neighborhood and should be part of one ward. And then finally, you know, some of the community maps. One map in particular connects or includes the downtown area with northeast Bakersfield, you know, the far northeast Bakersfield, when, in my mind, they are very, very different neighborhoods. Northeast, and I'll defer to my colleague, Vice Mayor Weir, but in my opinion, having many family and friends who live out there is heavily residential, whereas downtown is more of a mixed use. And the, you know, areas and neighborhoods around downtown and the core tend to be more historic in nature, older infrastructure. And as someone mentioned earlier, the architecture is separate as well. And I think it's just a different, different community that, that doesn't quite make sense to include downtown with a northeast, a northeast ward, in my opinion. So, we can look at that. And then finally, you know, it's really nice to hear from the Punjabi community and have their representation tonight. And as we move forward, would ask staff to continue to engage with the various stakeholders so that we can hear their concerns and really drill down on some of those ideas that they have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to ditto Andre's statements regarding annexations. When you look at it, it's really kind of a swiss cheese, kind of a appearance. And I hope when we come back and talk about council goals that we really emphasize that priority. Jakarta Movement, thank you so much for coming and speaking today. I was on the phone earlier with Deepa from the Wibl Temple, Mampri, all the way in Madison, Wisconsin, talking to her today about this. Deep in Fresno with Jakarta. And I like what you've done, but, and they agreed, when we talked about some economic interests that are really painted out with the lines that were presented, that really helped support Ward Seven and really the Sikh community. And without that economic advantage, it kind of places us at a disadvantage. And they agreed, and I think maybe some more conversations on tweaking, tweaking some things will be in line. So, but thanks again for showing up. Really appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm going to reinforce, I guess, what Councilmember Freeman spoke about as far as the river being aligned. It's always, my experience in the 40-plus years I've been in Bakersfield, the river was, you know, northwest, southwest, north of the river. We have, it talks about communities of interest being outdoor recreation areas or school districts or natural resources. You know, the river's obviously a natural resource. We have north of the river Parks District, and the school district lines go there, and the neighborhoods were built, you know, differently, as you mentioned, north of the river. So, so the lines that go along the river make more sense to me on the western end. And then, as you go up, coffee, you know, is different. So, I think Map A makes the most sense to me with maybe the change of, like you mentioned, instead of Ming Avenue, the river is the boundary between the two wards there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to applaud you coming out tonight and letting your voice be heard. And I know everybody up here is listening to your voice. And this is a unique time because most of us won't be here next time this rolls around. So, we've got to do a good job. I've looked through the maps. I have some pluses and minuses on the maps, but when it all came down, there's one map that I particularly liked, and it's Map 2A. It doesn't really seem to break communities of interest. It doesn't really seem to affect Ward Two very much. And it did make some changes, but they weren't radical to anybody's ward. In fact, I think it might have improved some of the wards. So, I understand that right now it's out of the deviation, but I would like to have them go back and correct the deviation problem. And then I would like this map to go to vote before the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Colleagues, other comments? Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody who's come out, whether you spoke or not. I just want to thank you and applaud you for doing the work and being courageous enough. As a young person, specifically to many of the young people who came out here, it takes a lot of courage to come up and speak your voice, but it's so important that we hear from you. And I just want to encourage everybody to continue to come out. We have at least two more opportunities to comment on the maps, potentially more. And so I want to encourage each and every one of you to continue to come back, and then maybe next time, bring a friend or maybe even two, because we want to hear from you guys. And that's the truth. And we take this, you know, public input, you know, very seriously. And it's valuable and it's important to the way in which we roll out this process, which is so important. One of the things that I want to lift up that I think Councilmember Gonzalez touched on is that, really what we're talking about is, you know, proper representation, right? And specifically for some of our minority communities, an opportunity to have influence in who it is that you get to elect. Now, it's not going to be possible for every minority community to have, you know, a majority in every district. And I think that's a reality that all of us understand in this room. It's certainly something that we understand as a council. But there are opportunities through coalition building to actually empower some of those communities. I think that was part and parcel to some of the comments that were made from our Punjabi Sikh brothers and sisters, but then also for the African-American community, right? I think there were a select few maps that actually qualified specifically the Jakarta map, but then also the Equitable Maps Coalition that actually did that through Ward Seven. And I believe, I'll speak specifically, if I can pull up a chart. I believe it's Ward Seven and Ward Five. in this process. But tonight, I would actually like to ask that our consultants, I don't know if they're in the room tonight, but would actually like to ask that a map be drawn that includes three VRAs. We currently have two. That also keeps downtown together. I think that the good thing here is that downtown actually needs to pick up population. So there's actually an opportunity to keep downtown whole while also including more opportunity areas. One of the other things that I wanted to lift up that I think Councilmember Gonzalez touched on is that, when we look at the map, Ward Three presents a serious challenge, in my mind, from a visual standpoint, but also from, you know, a legal standpoint. And in my mind, even if there is some legal foundation for us to argue that it's okay for that map to be the way that it is, if there's an opportunity for us to make it even better, then why not do that? Right? And obviously, clearly, through two of the maps that have been presented tonight, it is possible. So I think we definitely take that into consideration, the map that I'm requesting. And the last thing that I'll ask is that, I can't tell you, but most of the maps cut up the MLK and Lakeview area. I kind of see that as the representative for Ward One, as a holistic community, a community of interest. I don't know if we've received direct feedback from constituents, but that's certainly something that I've heard on many occasions, and would like to keep that intact as one community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Any other council members wishing to speak at this point? City Manager Clegg.
Yeah, Mayor and council, if I may, provide some summarization, I think, of the feedback that we have received. And I'll go a little bit in maybe reverse order as it's reflected in my notes. I think, Councilmember Arias, I understand the request for three VRAs that keeps downtown intact, MLK, Lakeview intact, and looks at a continuity for Ward Three. I would note with that request, we'll do our best. I would note with that request, we'll do our best. One of the challenges that we face is because of some of those county pockets, you know, both north of the city, but also in the middle, you know, like Bell Terrace and those other areas, that there are limited areas in which to move wards if we hold true to each of those desired outcomes. But we'll do our best on that, that last piece. Beyond that, I, I feel like there is several consistent pieces of feedback about the river as a notable geographic boundary. I think that's consistent with the criteria for redistricting that, that we look at geographically easily understandable boundaries. And so I think between Map One and Map 2A, taking a look at some of the areas along the river that still would get us within a level of deviations, it makes more sense. I think that the feedback about maintaining communities of interest related to downtown is consistent with 2A or 1 with some adjustments to those levels of deviation. And then I think, I sense an opportunity to do a little bit of follow-up with Councilmember Parlier related to the feedback on public submission number three that I think could potentially be consistent with 1A and, excuse me, 1 and 2A, but takes into account that piece of feedback related to Ward Seven. So I, I think we can come back with a map that is close to 1 and 2A with some of these adjustments and considerations. And we can also come back with a map.
He keeps saying 1. Are you, are you, do you mean A?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilmember. I do mean A. So Map A and 2A that make some of these adjustments, but then also have an alternative based on the criteria outlined by Councilmember Arias. So I think we would be coming back to council with two considerations for this. To go back to the feedback that Ms. Carrier provided to the council on the timing as we started this public hearing, we are targeting to have a final recommended map for March 16th. So we're going to work with our consultants to bring something back as early as next week's meeting on March 2nd, so that we can get some feedback on those revisions to ensure that they're in the direction that council is desiring, so we can still make some adjustments based on additional feedback we get on March 2nd prior to March 16th.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. I don't see any other requests at this point. And so, sorry. Do you want to comment on redistricting? Redistricting? No. Okay, so we will then move on to the next item. Madam Clerk.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Gray, would you like to comment?
You want me to try this again? Anyway, okay. So again, the Kern County Board of Supervisors voted to oppose these bills. And what is shocking to me about them is 86-76 is that 12-year, children 12 years or older can be vaccinated without parental consent. That's a real concern for me.
Councilmember Gray, would you just hold one minute so we can clear the chambers, please?
Sure. Okay. And Senate Bill 871, which would end the personal belief exemption of COVID-19 vaccine for schoolchildren. I would like to commend the Board of Supervisors publicly for doing so, for opposing these two bills. As Zach Scrivener was quoted saying in the Bakersfield Californian, and I would agree, "Bills such as these were some of the many state policies that have caused Californians to leave the state." I'd also like to commend the Fruitvale School District for opposing state mandated vaccination in students and staff in K through 12 school and CDPH K through 12 school guidance mandates, including masking in schools. The district greatly supports individual choice and believes that exemptions should be allowed. This one school district in Kern County recently has had five credentialed teachers leave the state and 51 students disenroll to leave the state. That's a huge impact on our city when we're only talking about one school that's reporting that. The district also said that they expect a greater access to leave the state if these measures in Sacramento are passed, proof of what our supervisor Scrivener was quoted saying. So how, why does, why am I bringing this up at a city council meeting? Fellow Kern County residents, we're living in very threatening times where not only our freedom is under siege, but also our livelihoods from unreasonable legislation in Sacramento that affects every area of our life, including our own health and well-being, the likes of it that we have not seen before in our nation's history. One of our founding fathers and second president of the United States, John Adams, said, "Liberty once lost is lost forever." So let's not let this happen. We are the people. I would encourage you to stand up and make your voices heard. So at this time, I would like to make a referral to staff to allow for our council to consider sending a letter, such as what the Board of Supervisors did, to the governor's office opposing these mandates. And I would like that to be placed on our next March 2nd agenda meeting for a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Colleagues, other requests to speak? Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, I'm gonna put a plug in for March 12th. We are going to be hosting Job Fair at MLK Park. Just this morning, we took a tour with county staff, county ETR, and the Americas Job Center. We are really excited. This is actually the first job fair that the county has been able to do since the beginning of COVID. So we're really excited. Again, that's March, Saturday, March 12th. We're going to be out there from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So anybody who is looking to hire some qualified folks to work in, in their organization or their business, please get in contact with county ETR or with my office and we'd be happy to get you signed up for a booth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank Public Works, solid waste, further bulk waste, regular pickups. I was at one recently and there was all sorts of stuff they were collecting. Without that, a lot of stuff would end up on our roadways out in the, you know, the far south or north end of the, the city. And it just helps really keep our city clean. I just want to give you a thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Any other requests to speak?
I was reminded by former councilwoman Jackie Sullivan of a milestone date, and we have just reached the 20th anniversary of the city council vote in honor of the, in the vote to display the national motto. And so I have a certificate for her. We weren't able to do presentations today, but presented to Jackie Sullivan on the 20th anniversary of the city council vote in honor of the vote to display the national motto, "In God We Trust," in the City of Bakersfield Council Chambers, in recognition of your efforts that have resulted in the national motto being displayed in the chambers of nearly 750 municipalities, including 151 in California, and in recognition of your leadership and continued commitment to support and promote patriotism. So Councilmember Sullivan will have that for you and thank you for your leadership. Just one more item. I've been getting a lot of comments from constituents about the cleanliness of our city, as I'm sure my colleagues have. I know we've undergone many, many efforts and thank you, staff, for all of that. Just like you to consider ways to expedite those efforts and see what we can do to better meet the expectations of our public. Any other requests for comments? And Councilmember Gray, do you have some special guests here that maybe you'd like to introduce?
I would. And you know what? I really commend them for sitting through this two-hour meeting that isn't the most exciting things at times, especially people that are from out of town. But my dear daughter-in-law, Lane Gray, and my granddaughter, Piper Gray, I'm proud of you. And they're here from Reno. And she stayed an extra day to just be here so that Piper could come and see what her Mimi does. So I just want to say thank you. It's been wonderful.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I know Piper, Grandma, is so proud of you. She talks about you all the time. She wanted you to lead the pledge, but that didn't quite work out with our timing. But maybe the next time you're in Bakersfield, we'll have you do that. And so seeing no other requests to speak, we are adjourned at 7:24.